Seven o'clock, having arrived, if you'd please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll turn next to public participation, citizens' concerns. Are there any citizens' concerns? Seeing none, we'll go to reports, and our first report are from our auditors. Welcome.
Thank you.
Would you be kind enough to introduce yourself and give us a little presentation?
Sure, thank you. Good evening, my name is Erica Lucia. I'm a manager with Melanson Heat, and I was in charge of the 2014 audit for the town of Holbrook. As part of our audit, there are several different reports that we issued for the town of Holbrook during the course of the year, some of which deal specifically with the school, so I'd like to kind of go through those reports this evening. The various reports that we issue are the town's financial statements and an audit report with regards to that, the town's management letter, the agreed-upon procedures report dealing with the end-of-year report for the school, as well as a single audit report. I'm just going to go through those various reports with you.
Please do. Which one would you like to start?
The, I just want to touch upon the town's annual financial statements. This includes the whole town, not just the school. The school information is part of the audit of the town, and the figures are presented in the financial statements, but they do show up as, you know, one or two line items. Usually education expense, there's a few intergovernmental line items which relate to the school department, but again, this is as, you know, the town as a whole, so unless there are any specific issues related to the town's financial statements, I thought we'd maybe go to the town's management letter, because there are issues directly related to the school.
Well, actually, before you do, I do have one question which touches on this in some sense. As you know, we use the soft write system here, and the town doesn't. Has there been any recommendation by the auditors of perhaps having a unified system for both the town and the school? We find we spend an awful, our business manager spends an awful lot of time taking raw data, actually hand-placing it into the soft write system, and it seems to cause considerable delays on the one hand, you know, on the other hand, the older system at the town seems to set up a series of very sub-departments having spreadsheets, and no one can really tell at an instance what's been done. I didn't know if your audits looked into that or made suggestions.
There's been discussions with regards to that, however, the town accountant has been able, over the years, to provide us with all the necessary information that we need to perform our audit, and in a timely manner. So, as far as the audit is concerned, it has not provided any delays with regards to obtaining the information. You know, sometimes it does present a little bit of a difficulty with regards to the school having one system and the town having another, but there seems to have been a few workarounds over the years. I know they've had the system for a number of years and have thought about looking into other programs, but I'm not sure how far that they have gotten on that.
All right, so you don't see it as an auditing issue?
No, no.
Thank you.
Yep. So, the first report that I'd like to go through is the management letter. It's for the town. As part of the audit, we don't just look at numbers, we also look at internal controls and policies and procedures to identify if they're operating effectively, and this report documents areas where we feel that improvements can be made to strengthen internal controls and policies and procedures. There weren't any material weaknesses that were identified. If we had identified any, we would be required to report them. There was one significant deficiency, but that related to the collection of, you know, the tax collection and the weaning process, so that was not directly related to the school. There was one comment, which is the very last comment, which is on the last page, which does deal with the school department, and that was to contract for an audit of the student activity funds. As part of the match general law, when you accept to have student activity funds, it says in the verbiage that you're to have an audit done annually of the student activity funds in compliance with the DESE guidelines. It's never really been enforced, however, because the DESE, which is the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, never had guidelines to follow, so they weren't really able to enforce that. However, recently, they have come out with audit guidelines to be followed with regards to the student activity funds, so the understanding was that for fiscal '14, which is the report that we're going through, that there would be a management letter saying that you need to contract for having the audits performed by the end of 2015. And the understanding was that if an audit wasn't done by the end of 2015, that a compliance require, or a compliance finding would be issued, and that would show up in the town's management letter, as well as in the single audit report, which we'll get into in a little bit. However, the school has contracted with us to have an audit done of the junior, senior high school student activity funds as of the end of fiscal '15, which is June 30th of 2015, so this should not be an issue next year. As part of the audit of the student activity funds, there will be a report that will be issued, which will outline, you know, any items that we come up with during the course of our review.
When would that typically be issued?
Probably in the next few months. We actually are just in the information gathering stage. We don't have a set deadline for it being completed. It's pretty much as soon as we can get all the information and get, you know, the work process. So, we, over the past few weeks, have started to get information with regards to that in our starting the audit presently.
Thank you.
Yep.
Are there any questions on this particular segment of the audit?
So, that is the town's management letter. The next report that I'd like to go through is the agreed-upon procedures report for the school end-of-year report. The school every year has to issue an end-of-year report, which pretty much reports to the state what the revenues and expenditures were for the year, also transportation expenditures, ridership information, budgets, et cetera. And we are engaged to perform agreed-upon procedures in compliance with the DESE compliance requirements to determine whether there were any instances of non-compliance with that. So, this report, it's not actually an audit. We don't express an opinion on the end-of-year report, but we go through the various procedures as outlined in the DESE compliance supplement. If you would turn to page three. Page three is the schedule of findings, so these are the items that we noted where the end-of-year report was not in compliance with that supplement. The first item, which is finding number one, is to properly report revenue on schedule one. There were a few different issues with regards to schedule one, and schedule one is the overall reporting of the revenues and expenditures for the school. The first item was that grant award amounts were reported rather than the actual amounts received, so there's a line item for grant revenue. And instead of the actual revenue that was received during that period being reported, the amount that was awarded was reported, so that resulted in a $44,000 variance. The next two items are really just a classification. There were certain items, the Learning Together grant revenues of $2,900 were reported on line 590 instead of 300. And the other was a similar situation, where it was reported on, you know, one line and stuff of another, but total dollar amount was not wrong. It was just wrong lines. Finding number two is with regards to...
Wait, why don't we just go through them? Does anyone have any questions on finding number one?
Also, I would like to add that, under our recommendation, you'll notice that in response to all of these findings, that we understand a, an amendment has been filed. The school is able to file amendments with all of these changes that have been identified, and those amendments have been filed. So, any of these items that we're discussing have been corrected and have been filed via an amendment with the state.
I just want to ask the business manager, I know these weren't under your watch, but is that a common mistake with the line 300 gets...
Sometimes, yes. It can be confusing.
Okay, is it because of the way the form is?
Someone's interpretation of something might, someone might think a grant falls into one specific category, when in reality, it should belong in another category.
And indeed, in some states, they, this is all done at the state level. It doesn't, that, our state doesn't have that, and that's why we're having these audits, is that my understanding? Is that correct?
I believe so, yes, yep.
Okay, go ahead.
The next item, which is finding number two, and this was an item that we spoke about last year when we were doing this presentation as well, was to execute a written agreement, and this is a written agreement between the school department and the town identifying how you're going to allocate indirect costs. So, these are indirect costs with regards to fringe benefits, various municipal expenses, budgets, et cetera. And then it also, one of the line items, which was the non-employee insurance, was understated by $2,000 when you compare what was reported on the end-of-year report and the supporting documentation from the town. There was a small variance there. But again, with regards to the variance on the end-of-year report, that amount has been amended. I know that we had sent down some templates last year with regards to options for coming up with agreed-upon, agreements between the school and the town, but I believe that they're still in the works. Item number three, which is on page four, is to properly allocate special education expenditures, and this was on one of the schedules, which is schedule four, that reports the special education expenditures. And there was, again, it was a, the dollar amount was not incorrect, it was just the reporting of the lines. The total dollar amount was correct, however, the allocation between preschool, which is ages three to five, as well as ages six to 21, their columns set up, and it was just the misallocation amongst the columns. Item number four was to properly report transportation costs and riders. Again, this was more of a classification in terms of homeless transportation being reported in other programs where it should have been reported under regular day. So, that was the major issue with regards to the transportation costs. Again, you know, amendments have been filed to address all these issues. I don't know if there are any questions with regards to the end-of-year report? The next document that I'd like to go through is the independent auditor's report with regards to the single audit. When a town has federal expenditures in excess of $500,000, you need to have a single audit done, which means an audit of the federal expenditures, and there are various ways to determine how much to audit, but the town of Holbrook fell under a high-risk category because there had been findings in previous years. So, when you have findings in the previous years, you need to be classified as high-risk, which means that you need to audit 50% of the town's federal expenditures. If you could turn to page eight.
Well, before you do that, on page five...
Of the end-of...
Of these questions?
Oh, okay, yep. So, we're back on the end-of-year report.
Right, on the end-of-year report. The first three all talk about this integrated, whether or not there's an integrated assist, system, so why wouldn't that be an issue?
Because there, there have been workarounds for that, so the way that it's operating now, it might be a little bit more legwork, but it seems to be working effectively with regards to the payroll processing. You know, the first question is, is the payroll system integrated with the accounting system? No, but the information that flows over to the town is done in such a way that there have not been issues with regards to payroll.
Okay, and then three asked the same question, essentially. It was, it's a non-payroll question, right?
Right, yep, and this is, this isn't saying if there's a no answer in this, this is always a bad thing. It's just documenting, okay, is it integrated? No. Okay, so what does the town have?
I understand your position, I'm just, I'm just asking. Okay, great, fine, I'm sorry.
I mean, would an integrated system be great? Yes, but even, even towns that do have integrated systems still end up having troubles with regards to that, because the way that the school system has to have their chart of accounts set up, their chart of accounts are structured a lot of times in a way that it complies with the end-of-year report and how things need to be reported on the end-of-year report, whereas on the town side, there's a different set of codes in terms of the account structure. So, you know, while many towns do have an integration, they sometimes will struggle with the chart of accounts because of having them match up between reporting for the end-of-year report versus reporting for the town side. So, there is, you know, if, if it is going to be integrated, that is something that does require a bit of effort to come up with a chart of accounts that meets everybody's needs.
Okay, thank you.
So, that the chart fields don't match?
Pardon?
Who the chart fields don't match?
Right, so the, the school, there's certain, how to say, certain fields within the account number that will identify, okay, this is special education, this is transportation, and those numbers are almost, you know, exactly some of the lines on the end-of-year report, and the end-of-year report is quite a long spreadsheet that has, you know, various accounts, so it's structured more towards the end-of-year report, whereas on the town side, they follow the uniform municipal accounting system chart of accounts, which has a certain structure in that, so it does, you know, if you are going to integrate, that is something that will take a bit of legwork to kind of make sure everybody is on the same page.
Well, maybe the auditing needs and that of the, that of the integration within the town are a little different issues, so.
And, I mean, certainly, if that is something that the town and the school decide they want to do, we have several clients that we could have put you in touch with that would be helpful in terms of reaching that. Yep.
Good, okay, sorry.
No, no problem. So, back to the single audit report. If we could please turn to page eight. So, as I was mentioning, any town that has federal expenditures in excess of $500,000 is currently required to have a single audit performed. So, for the town of Holbrook, during the course of 2014, there were federal expenditures totaling $969,264, which is that very bottom figure. The two major programs that we audited were both school programs. It was the school lunch program and the special education, education grant cluster. There are several different special education grants that fall within the cluster. It's the entitlement grant, as well as the early childhood program improvement. There are several other, other grants. So, as part of looking at the special education cluster, we looked at several grants under that umbrella. There, as far as the special education grant is concerned, we issued a clean opinion. There weren't any findings that we had with regards to the special education grants. We did have some findings with regards to the school lunch program, so there's a qualified opinion on that, meaning that we identified instances of non-compliance. And those instances are noted beginning on page 11. So, the first finding is to improve the application approval process for, to be eligible for free and reduced lunch. Your, there's income eligibility guidelines that are put out by the state, and you need to be within certain brackets, depending upon the number of people in the family and your income. During the course of our testing, we tested 25 applications, and one of the 25 applications did not meet the requirements for the free or reduced lunch program, so there was one instance there. So, we recommend that the school develop procedures to ensure that the applications are reviewed.
How did that compare with the year before? Do you have that?
And year before was one as well. We also noted the same thing, and it was one out of the 25. Not the same one.
No, right.
As part of this report, similar to the, the end-of-year report, there is a response in here, and in these responses, it says what the school has done regarding these items. The responses have not been audited, but our understanding is that in 2015, a new process has been put in place whereby the initial reviewer or the determiner signs off on it, and then a final reviewer has to sign off as well. So, there's two sets of eyes on every application. Again, that's our understanding. It has not been audited. On page 12, the next item is to improve the timeliness of verification procedures. This was a similar comment to last year. As part of the school lunch program, they're required to select a certain number of those applications that are received and verify them, back to actual supporting documentation, and there's a checklist that they need to go through in order to determine the number of applications to verify. As part of the checklist, it says that this verification process needs to have taken place by November 15. However, this year, the first request that was sent out to families was not sent out until October 28, and the final verification was submitted in February, so a couple months after the required deadline. Again, our understanding from the responses is that during 2015, that this was done more timely, so we will probably see that this year if we...
Wasn't the, yeah, but weren't the, it seems to me, the year ago, it was also in February that they weren't finalized, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct, yep. I believe it might have been January, actually.
So, it was actually later?
In previous year, yes.
That really bothers me, I may have to say that, because we, we made a big point of trying to rectify that, and I don't, I don't understand that. Go ahead.
And again, part of, you know, the process, once, you know, all the applications are in and you know how many people are going to be part of the, the school lunch program, is to just get that going right away, because you know it's November 15th that it needs to be done by, so, you know, start of year is a little hectic, but to start the process early on would be beneficial, because there is also a little bit of a time lag, because you send out the requests to families, and they need to pull that information, they need to submit their pay stubs and all that to back up the amount that they're reporting on their application, so you need to obviously build in a little bit of leeway there. Many times, you'll need to send out a second request to get the information, so. The, the second item, which actually starts on, on page 12 and moves over to page 13, is to improve the verification procedure, so we're still talking about the same process. However, in that determination of how many applications you verify, it's supposed to be 3% of error-prone applications, and error-prone applications are applications that fall within $100 of the monthly income requirements on the guidelines, or $1,200 annually. Those would be your error-prone applications, and you're supposed to test the basic, the basic calculation is to test 3% of those error-prone, which for 2014 would have been one application. However, instead, they tested 3% of all eligible applications, so they tested six, so they tested a few more than needed. So, it was just a matter of making sure that you're testing what the form is requiring you to test. And again, our understanding is that in 2015, this has been dealt with. The last item, oh, I'm sorry. Did I stick one? Yep, it was just the three. I apologize. So, that summarizes the, the single audit report. So, again, there were the, the four various reports that were issued. It was the, the financial statements, the management letter, which we dealt with, the, the student activity fund audit, which has been contracted to be performed, the end-of-year report, where all of the items have been amended, and then the single audit report, where there was a clean opinion on the sped programs and a qualified opinion on the school lunch.
Are there any questions on this segment of the audit?
And I do have to say that, you know, everybody has been cooperative with regards to pulling the information. I know Trish hasn't been here very long, but with regards to finishing up the end-of-year report, she was very helpful in getting us the last few things that we needed, because that has a tendency to drag on that part of the audit. So, it was nice to have that wrapped up and amendments filed as soon as the report was issued, so.
Well, I think we have a pretty good team here, and we're hopeful, hopeful that the audit will verify that over the coming years. And obviously, when, to the degree that some discrepancies are found, it's always the useful information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for having me.
Thanks.
All right, next, we're going to have a building update. Who would like to tackle that? Would you like to tackle that, Beth?
Well, I'll start. Barbara, I'm sure has, well, the, the Subcommittee for Interior Design met at Klansberg's office in Boston on Tuesday, and we spent a lot of time looking at finishes and, you know, really getting a sense of what the interior of the building will look like. So, we spent, it was a good meeting. We, you know, got to really actually see some of the things, so. So, that's moving along. I know Barbara's been taking a lot of pictures of you.
Yeah, I'll be, yeah, I'll probably come up on Monday and do it again, but, yeah, you know, it was kind of good to meet at Klansberg because it allowed us to spread things out. I mean, the first meeting we had, we had here, and it was just like a sample of everything. But, I mean, they had, you know, we had a, we had the tiles spread out like the width of the corridor, so to better get an understanding of how the, the colors would fit in, because, you know, just seeing them in a, you know, a small room, we all had issues with some of the colors, but when you see it kind of more spread out, it made, it made a whole world difference. So, you know, and, and the way, what they're trying to do is there are basically four quadrants, because you've got the 3K to two, and then three and five, and then six through nine, and 10 through 12. Each quadrant has a different color scheme, but with various shades of blue kind of running through and kind of unifying it all, so, you know, kind of fine-tuning that, as well as the, the materials, the tiles. I mean, I think the tile design, and I know it won't look exactly what it looked like on the model, but the, and the main corridors is really, really nice.
Yeah, yeah. And I, I think the designers have been great at listening and answering our questions, or explaining, you know, why they made a choice, and also listening and changing things that they think. You know, I think they've been help, very helpful to work with.
Yeah, they've been great. And the other thing that, at the last permanent school building committee meeting, they kind of looked at the, the traffic flow, and although it will be updated, it's actually hanging up over there, but kind of the traffic flow around the temporary parking lot, which they're working on out front, and making sure the signage, the, that there is enough signage and roadway markings to minimize the mess that the start of school is going to be. Because this is a total change from anything that anybody's been used to, so that we want to make sure that the signage is pointed and direct and easy to see, and also painting, you know, arrows in the, in the parking lot, you know, we kind of looked at one way into the temporary parking lot and one way out, as opposed to entering and exiting from both sides.
Shouldn't there be a, you know, an overall presentation of the community as a whole with flyers and...
Well, once it gets fine-tuned, it will be distributed widely.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think that's a key issue.
But they're still kind of, but they're kind of fine, but they're, they're kind of, they, they've taken our concerns, and they will update it. And then, once the building committee approves it, then it will be available for wide distribution.
That will, that will go out to everybody in the whole community. The parking is the biggest change out in the front there, so.
And not cutting through St. Joe's.
We'll drop off, we'll drop off, we'll drop off and pick up the... We will drop off, we will drop off, we will drop off and pick up B. Is that?
The, the same, that doesn't change.
It doesn't?
No, but the parking lot would be in the front where that lawn is.
Right, right, I understand.
But the entrance to the parking lot is up at the end of the building. So they come in one way and go out. They can't, um, come in both directions. So that's where the signage is going to be important. They, they were gonna work right now.
Um, and while this isn't the final one, um, basically what's, what you see in red, sorry, I just needed to get my bearings, is, um, the entrance, the drop off. So, you know, where the flagpole, that tiny plot of land of grass will still be there. So that's a drop off, but there'll be the roadway to enter and exit so that we will get the second half of our driveway back, um, once they can build the construction road.
Right.
Um, which they've started to work on. But, yeah, once, once all the concerns and everything are addressed with signage and road markings, roadway markings, then it will get distributed not only to the greater school community, but to the, uh, to the town as well.
And when, when are they expected to finish the parking lot up front, the temporary parking?
August twelfth.
Are there any other, uh?
Which will still leave a couple of weeks before, um, the first school starts.
Are there any other aspects of this update?
No, my only question was if we should have someone directing traffic the first couple of days.
Did you wanna say something, Mike?
Yes, I've been having weekly construction meetings with Kinsigley. And Kinsigley's gonna provide, uh, the first week or two of school, all of the one we want, um, some people to help us control traffic.
Okay.
Gugazia?
I'm gonna have police help and school staff help.
I see.
First couple of weeks because we know it's gonna be hectic, directing to people. And we feel that if we hit it early, we can kinda get everyone trained.
Yeah.
And figure out exactly, you know, make it a lot smoother.
That's great.
It's too bad they can't be a practice run or something.
First week or two of school, all of the ones needed to get everybody where these things.
That's good.
Well, I mean, it kinda will be a practice run, not with everybody, but certainly with staff as staff start to come in.
We start before them anyway.
May not be a bad idea that to have something like that. Well, all right, so now let's turn to something near and dear to our hearts, financial update.
All right, so I've given you all, uh, two packets. One is labeled the F Y fifteen expense account balance report. And the second is the F Y sixteen expense account balance report. At this, at this time of the year, we're still working in two years. We're still trying to close out F Y fifteen. Uh, if you look at the last page on the F Y fifteen expense account balance, uh, which is page nine, you'll see under the available column, there's twenty-two thousand dollars remaining for F Y fifteen. So right now, I'm working on making sure that all of the grants accounts balance out, that all of the revolving accounts balance out, that all of the bills for F Y fifteen come in, are encumbered. Um, and that's what I do to e- to close out F Y fifteen. So I'm working on getting that available balance down to zero. Okay? Excuse me, and the second report for F Y sixteen, since we've just started the, uh, fiscal year, you'll see the appropriation on page nine again. You'll see the appropriation of thirteen point one million dollars. We've expended to date, which has mostly been payroll, a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. We've encumbered half a million dollars and our available budget is the twelve million, twelve and a half million dollars. So obviously we haven't done too much yet, being just a few days into the new s- school year. Um, and then as I progress into F Y sixteen, I'll be on top of the grants, making sure that they get spent down in a timely manner and the revolving funds as well to make sure they don't go into deficits.
And, and if I could make a request, I know, you know, we're still juggling the fiscal years and such, but it would be really helpful, um, if we got this with our packets so that we can look at them and then bring you any questions.
Yes, absolutely. I'll make sure, I'll make sure of that from this point forward.
But I love the fact that the page is numbered. That helps.
Are there any further questions? All right. Moving right along, uh, we have this, uh, action, a few action items. And they are the, to designate a school committee representative to surrounding community negotiating team. Was this the interest Nancy you were expressing?
Well, I said I would if you needed somebody.
Okay, um.
That's, that's going with the, um, the casino?
Casino, yeah.
Right. Well, I would, uh, it will, I would, uh, entertain a motion to have our representative as Nancy Alterio. Would someone like to make that motion?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Congratulations.
All right, that's been, hopefully we agreed to that.
So now.
Because we all had the, uh, before, before we move on to the minutes, the one thing that, um, and I guess if we go on to old business, but we tabled at our last meeting, the, um, official delegate.
Yeah, I was gonna take that up a little later, but I don't mind taking it up now, uh, since you've raised it.
Okay, well, it's kind of an action item, so.
It is. Um, Nancy's not able to make it and neither is John, so the question is who would want to do it?
Barbara wanna do it?
I'm thinking Barbara is the perfect choice.
Cause I don't know if I'll be there Wednesday.
You've nominated Barbara. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Congratulations. Okay, you asked for it.
No, I never asked for it.
No, I mean, at this particular moment in the budget.
I am going down on Wednesday, so would you?
All right.
But you don't have a room. But you don't have a room?
But, yeah, if you would send the form with the official delegate, that would be awesome, I guess.
Okay, now we'll turn to the minutes of the, uh, June eighteenth meeting. Everyone's had the opportunity to approve those, uh.
If we'll should approve the minutes from the June eighteenth school committee.
Anyone second that?
Um, I think there was one I had a question on.
Okay, all right, wanna wait on that, then?
It was the one with the discussion about regionalization committee.
Okay, I don't think it's, is it this one? Yes, it was. Ms. Tolson said they even just appointed their regional judge to the moment to which response was not ever received, so it's, it's.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think, just to clarify, they hadn't just appointed their committee. They appointed their committee late and we had just had contact with them, so.
So instead of just appointed, just had contact with?
Yeah, yeah.
So would you like to amend appointed to just had contact with?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, had contact with.
Yeah.
So, uh, as amended, uh, unless I hear any objections to the amendment, I'll take that as an informally. Uh, would I entertain a motion to accept the amendments as amended?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, now we'll move on to the next, uh, uh, minutes, which are from June, uh, the twenty-ninth of June. And, uh, anyone have any comments on those?
See them.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't see them either.
Right, somebody give them the minutes.
Okay, so what we'll do is we'll defer the minutes of the twenty-ninth of June instead of on here. And we'll get those to Bridget for our next meeting, okay? Makes it a lot easier. Now, the school committee goals, discussion item. We were gonna have a copy of those, Beth, are you?
Uh, Barbara emailed us a copy.
I emailed it.
This is the updated version, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
This is the one you emailed us.
Okay, yeah, let's get some copies.
Yeah, I mean, I made, I did the edits based on our conversations. And then Nancy and I met to make sure that, um, our notes kind of coincided. And so that was, that was a very productive, um, discussion.
Thank you, uh, Nancy and, uh, Barbara. All right, thank you Barbara and Nancy.
What we did was just to simplify the language.
Right, make them the one line.
Yes, action oriented.
I think that makes a lot of sense.
And, and even beyond our discussions, they, we kind of simplified them even further.
All right, well, let's take a look at them and, uh, we'll, uh, discuss that.
Do you have a center?
No, I didn't print it out. Actually tried to print it out.
And, um, Daddy?
I have said, thanks.
So I hope these do reflect our discussions.
Mm-hmm, I think those are very good. Does anyone have a comment, uh, on them?
Well, I'm, I like the format that they're in now, but I think they're easy for anyone to look at and understand what, what we're working with, but.
All right, so what we'll do is that our next meeting, we'll, we'll make this an action item. And if for some reason, uh, something sticks out, uh, that, uh, someone isn't looking at, though I feel the same way, I think these are very good, solid, grounded goals, um, that the committee as a whole worked hard on, long and hard on. I will, uh, we'll put that on if you wouldn't mind, as our next meeting is an action item, uh, to adopt the school committee goals.
Now, the only, the, that's fine, we should actually adopt the goals. But now we need to work on, um, I mean, most of them have action items for achieving the goals.
Right, right.
Probably want to think about making sure that there are, there is a rubric for achieving the goals and possibly on some, I mean, some of them are obviously ongoing. But, um, some of them we probably should put a timeline for, you know, a, a range of.
Yeah.
Right, I think what we'll do is, uh, we can have that discussion on the, you know, the, so making them so-called SMART goals, uh, as well. And we'll put that part of it under a discussion item.
For the next meeting, yeah.
Uh, for the next meeting, but we'll move the goals themselves as an action item next meeting, all right? So, um, we'll now turn to the Chartwell. Dear Chartwell, my dear Chartwell.
We thought we were going to have the contract approved from Jesse, as I told you. We thought we'd have it for today, but we don't. It's coming and it should be here at any time. But our, at least, um, Andrew has approved it so that we can, um, when Jesse approves it, we'll be able to sign.
Well, I don't know why this isn't on yet, but I think I'm gonna take an initiative and say that is there a, is there a superintendent, uh, superintendent's report that goes along with these items, uh, as, as we go along? Please feel free to fill that in. Um, I didn't, uh, being away, I wasn't as fastidious on, uh, looking at this as I should have, that should have been in there.
Actually, I have a question on the Chartwell contract. So that's just pending D E S C, S E approval, the two parties have agreed.
Agreed, right. Andrew had re- reviewed the, uh, contract and went back and forth with them so that, uh, they put the RFP in there. That was part of the objection.
And that, and their, that program, that change is ready to?
Yes, there's a timeline already in place for, uh, we have, um, the manager. And she will be meeting with, um, Deb Roach and, and do a walkthrough. And she's already been there to check it out, but they'll start coordinating everything as soon as we sign that contract.
It sounds like it's getting a little bit late in, in the game. Is there, is there a risk here that, that?
I don't think so, because, um, Karen's been appointed, so Karen Tobin, who is the, um, manager from, um, Chartwell's. And the timeline isn't starting until August anyway.
Okay.
Because, um, there's really nothing that they can get done in, in the summer. Uh, they just, you know, make sure that, um, everything is gonna be up and running so that they can, uh, so that they can all meet and that, uh, Deb can kind of indoctrinate her to what goes on.
And you think D E S C will have that approved in the near future?
Yes, shouldn't take long. We had it once. They came, sent it back with some comments. And, um, you know, so this is, this should take care of it.
Yeah.
Okay, and, um, now we'll turn to personnel that you have a interim principal appointment, uh, not the L A.
All right, we have two interim principal appointments and neither of them could be here tonight. But, um, um, Michelle Townan is again the, um, interim principal at the, at the J F K, which should be, um, good for consistency at that school since it's only, uh, uh, two years until we'll be merging into the big school. And Marian DeMello will be the interim principal at the junior senior high school. And, um, I sensed the, read her resume and all of that and it's also, uh, it's posted on Facebook and was sent out as an email, so if people are informed. Um, hopefully we'll have a chance for the, uh, public to meet her, uh, before school starts and, uh, do something similar to what we did, uh, last year. And, um, you know, have people do a meet and greet.
Yeah, with regard to resignations, we're just gonna take up number two on our line out in there.
Yes, Courtney Grable has been, um, an exemplary social studies teacher at the junior senior high school. But, um, her family obligations require her to have, she wa- wanted a part-time job, but because of our schedule, which is kind of a waterfall schedule, um, the periods don't stay in the same place every day. So it's really a difficult situation for somebody who's part-time, who needs to have, uh, you know, more of a flex. She can't be coming back and forth from, um, her house, so, um, that didn't work. But, um, she really did wanna stay here, but she just can't do the part-time the way our schedule is. So she is, uh, she's leaving, but we have, um, the job posted on School Spring. And, um, Kelly Grant, who is actually a point-six social studies teacher, will step into the full-time position. And so we're advertising for the point-six position that she did have last year, at the beginning of the year, anyway.
All right, now we're gonna turn to school committee members' report. My report is progress. I'm not gonna say anything other than that tonight. Uh, does anyone else have a report to make?
David, just a very brief report. In summer, I'm not out every night at various school functions. However, um, next Friday night, July thirty-first, is the theater camp production of Peter Pan. It's at six o'clock at the South School. And all are invited.
And school subcommittee reports. Do we have any subcommittee reports? All righty, so our next item is to vote to go into executive session. For the purpose of hearing a complaint against an individual, uh, we're not going to be coming out of, uh, executive session. Uh, and I will take a roll call vote. Bridget, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, well, now going into executive session.
Thank you very much.